Question, and I had forgotten that TML does an annual wastewater rate comparison. Mr. Williams had that and has provided that before he left. So, one of the things that the HDR engineers mentioned before they left is our base rate is unusually low because most people don't get into the wastewater treatment business for a dollar. So, we have enjoyed 40 years' worth of, yeah, of being able to not be in the wastewater business because of the epic gift. And Mr. Williams standing in the doorway, and clearly, when he does his hurriedist work, he does his best work because he built what he thought was a 20-year plant that has lasted 40. So, I think it's safe to say they don't build them like they used to.
It's been two years now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, you can see from this, and I appreciate that some of these cities are larger, but the question was not size, the question was, are we going to have the highest wastewater rates in this state? And you can see right here that our neighbors in Austin, their base rate's $51.96. What we were proposing, worst-case scenario, is $60. You can see Corpus Christi is at a base rate of 50. You can see, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm trying to call. I want to get that back.
You want me to go back?
No.
Um...
You ever seen the apples like on the road?
Here, Duncanville is at a base rate for 5,000 gallons of 50. You've got Little Elm where Wesley's going at $41. You've got Corsicana at 60. So, Corsicana, while bigger than us, kind of a standalone operation, their base rate at 10,000 gallons is 80. Midlothian is at 57.8 for 10,000, I mean, for 5,000, it goes to $90 for 10,000. So, click...
I have a question. I have a question.
So, the answer to your question, council member, is no, sir, we're not. Here is Taylor, another central Texas city, they're at $54.95, not out of a range of $60. So, there is precedence, clearly, for making this kind of investment and having similar kinds of outcomes. So, let me get up here, I probably passed us, let's get back in the...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's possible we didn't submit any information, so we might not be in the survey.
We turn them in every year.
Do we?
What is our... Yeah. She didn't want to say something.
So, not to belabor the point, but just to give perspective to people watching, we're not going to be uncompetitive. We're just going to get in the game of the wastewater business. So, thank you, Mr. Williams, for sharing that question.
Thank you.
So, while y'all are eating, I want to have a conversation about a partnership with Aqua. Let me kind of put this into perspective. I got here last year on March 13th, and within the month, the city council had considered a resolution that was unwilling to support some legislation that Representative Siria was supporting at the request of Aqua. And the legislature that was being considered would have removed a property owner's ability, who owns 20 acres or more, to self-decertify in ACC and pick a different provider. And the reason that that became important for Aqua is clearly, they have sold bonds that their water rights in their CCN becomes the source of collateral. So, for them, it was a, we got to hold on to our customer base because we've made long-term investments in bonds that we're counting on these people to pay for. The challenge that Aqua has is they don't address fire flow efficiently. So, where we address fire flow with pressure, Aqua addresses fire flow with volume. And what I mean by that is you have to buy way more water than you actually need in order to pressurize your system enough to be able to provide fire flow. And they have a tariff that they are required to use, and it is not competitive. So, they have put themselves in a position with that requirement to make folks like Bastrop easy to come in and cherry-pick their customers. So, rightly so, they had put together this legislation over a period of about six years to protect themselves. And honestly, if I'd been in Aqua, I'd been doing the same thing. So, Councilmember Jones was at that meeting, as was former Mayor Kestlis, along with some staff, and it was not pleasant. As the mayor had indicated, we had not had a relationship with Aqua, and you could feel the tension around the table seriously. And so, I'm new to the region, water is handled very differently in central Texas than I was used to, so I'm sitting there asking the more obvious questions. But at the end of the day, we got a very stern talking to by Representative Siria, Judge Poppy, and a few others in the room, that this vicarance got to stop. And y'all got to figure out a way to solve this problem, and don't make me, i.e. Representative Siria, yeah, don't make me solve it through the legislature. That was a Friday afternoon. I don't know the players, but gentleman that happens to be sitting next to me is Dave McMurray. He's the general manager with Aqua. So, I hear the center, I mean, the representative loud and clear. So, I pick up my phone, and I look over at David, Dave, and I said, "Hi, I'm Lynn Dumble. I'm the new city manager from the city of Bastrop, and clearly, you and I are going to be new best friends, so what are you doing Monday afternoon?" So, we left that meeting with a meeting already set. So, I asked Dave to bring his team, I bring my team. So, we met in the very back of this chamber, and it was tense. It was clear they didn't want to be there, my team didn't want to be there, and it was not particularly a productive conversation, but it was a first attempt. Dave and I then had some meetings, and because of the way I'm used to doing water and wastewater, a relationship is not particularly foreign. What we know and knew at the time was Aqua and Bastrop, in a competitive situation, makes economic development difficult, way more difficult than it needs to be. Because essentially, what has to happen is a developer comes in and shops the water CCN with Aqua. They know they're going to come over here and have to shop a wastewater agreement. "Oh, you do water, well, let's shop that agreement, and we'll compare you to Aqua. And then, we'll decide whether or not we want to decertify." Well, that's an unproductive relationship going forward, just, it just doesn't work. And so, we've got to figure out a way where we can work together, provide one-stop-shop, if you will, and address the economic development challenges. So, with that background, we have had numerous meetings. We've gone from, it was uncomfortable, to we pick up the phone down, call each other, and literally, we could pick up this meeting if it were Friday and go sit down in Dave's conference room, and it'd be fine. How can we help you? We've got a great relationship with David, their engineer. We've given them GIS maps of our system, they've given us GIS maps of their system, so we've come a long, long way. So, recognizing that Aqua has a problem with fire flow, we also recognize that their CCN is epically huge. We also recognize that they need some bond coverage, and they are counting on their water CCN to be the collateral, as I said, for the USDA grants that they have. So, that's what they've got to solve. What we've got to solve is what the mayor alluded to right before break, and that is that our water CCN is not even the city limits of Bastrop, but our wastewater CCN is three times the size of Bastrop, and really represents our future on how we manage this. And because we don't have access to the water data, it makes the collection of our wastewater rates and data problematic. So, there's a reason that you try to ensure your water CCN overlaps with your wastewater CCN, so you can do the calculations the way the industry has expected it to happen. So, there is some ability for us, long-term, to resolve that problem. And we also have an immediate need that Aqua can address. So, the mayor mentioned back in the summer that we approved an emergency connection agreement with Aqua in the event that we had a system failure that happened tomorrow, that we could go over there and turn on the valve, and they'd get us out of a bind, just like we get them out of a bind, just like that we helped WCID. So, we know that that was an option, and we had approached that agreement with solely that in mind. But the more we've gotten into this relationship, and how can we make it work, there is some ways for us to utilize the partnership to reduce the actual cost of providing redundancy and managing our system to our customers. So, Dave and I have spent a lot of time having these conversations. Each one of our teammates, like Tracy and I, met with Dave and his finance officer to talk about how we would manage some of the maintenance costs. Trey Wesley and I have met with Dave, David, and their team to talk about the engineering aspects of this. And then, Dave and I went to Austin and visited with his water attorney. So, I know that sounds like the wolves in the hen house, but their water attorney works for Goslin, I can't remember the other part of it.
What is it?
Yeah, Lloyd Goslin. When I was in the Metroplex, they were the water attorney for a lot of the water rate issues that we did a consortium on, so they're very well-respected statewide, understand the TCEQ process, and we're a very great source of information that if we go forward, what are some of the traps we've got to work through, how does that look? So, all of that is background to talk about what are short-term and long-term opportunities for us relative to a partnership with Aqua. One of the things that we have agreed to at a staff level that makes sense is this. So, let's park that just a moment. I made the comment before lunch that the developers are not my primary customer when you set rates for wholesale water rates, and that is true and factual. But, the flip side of that, and the boundary with which I make that statement, is now tied to Aqua on the back end. Aqua, in order to provide fire flow, is going to cause you to have to buy way more water than you need, volume, in order to provide fire flow. So, it is this number out here. There is a number right here where is it cheaper for you to buy Aqua's fire fossil solution or build your own? So, there's that rub. And as the city of Bastrop, in order to get any wastewater customers, we have to be on this side of, is it cheaper for the developer to build their own wastewater treatment plant or process it from, I switch gears on you, process their own water, buy it from Aqua, or buy water from us cheaper than the other two alternatives as wholesale? Okay? So, with that in mind, Aqua has a standardized contract and a standardized price. They'll sell it to anybody, doesn't matter who you are, at a wholesale rate if you meet their criteria. And so, what we could do is establish a relationship with Aqua. That would be a partnership agreement that essentially says this, if at any point in time, a developer comes to us and is willing to decertify Aqua's CCN and make their CCN our CCN, that we're going to be a good partner. We're not going to cut you off at the knees, we're just going to say, "We'll buy the water for that CCN from Aqua," except we'll buy it at a wholesale rate, not their retail rate. So, what that does then is allow them to still meet the collateral demands of their bonds and be able to tell the USDA that those customers, they're still serving, but they're serving it at a wholesale rate, not a retail rate. And that allows us now to approach a developer with the wholesale water rate, and we'll have to add money to that rate because we're going to have to have the maintenance and of the system to get the water to them, and the collection and all of that, so there's kind of that administrative fee you tack on there. And then, we'll be able to provide wastewater that makes sense for the same reasons. And the wastewater rate then is, we've got to be able to provide it to the developer cheaper than he can build a wastewater system. If not, we've cut our nose off to spite our face. So, while our residents are always our primary focus, we've got to respect that developer as a customer and always be less than what he can build it for. And that's the journey we have to take. Does that make sense? So, essentially, we're going to take the friction in the system out by just saying, "We're going to respect each other's requirements to the ratepayers, and we're going to be good neighbors." And so, we appreciate you can't provide fire flow as cheaply as we can, we appreciate you can provide water because you've got the resources, you've got the water rates, and more importantly, you've already got the permit, and we can do this and be in lockstep, and we can create a one-stop shop for developers, and the minute they walk in the door, whether they're talking to Sean Kirkpatrick, they're talking to planning and zoning, or they're dealing with public works, we've already, we know the answer to the question. It's just a question of how long you want this contract and how much do you need?
It becomes a one-stop shop.
That's right. And we think that's a win-win. Aqua likes it, we like it, and that is the best scenario Representative Siria could have ever dreamed for, when we were having that conversation back in June.
Okay, but, and it's not really a but, it's an and. Recognize that what I see going on here is that our operations arm has seen a problem and is bringing a solution, and it's one solution. It doesn't mean it's the only solution, it's their solution based on their best information and all of their history and work. But the decision to do that stuff is policy. So, we can't buck that, you know, she's staying in her lane, I'm supposed to provide you solutions, but our lane is setting that policy, and like all of the things that we've talked about today, there are consequences to those policy decisions, and they aren't like you make them one day and then you unmake it the next day. We're making long-term decisions, and the reason it was like, I don't want to say but because I, this is making logical sense to me, but I just want us to understand this, these kind of, this is absolutely policy discussion that this council owns, that we've got to live with, and we're making decisions for all of our citizens and future citizens for a long time. And I know that's maybe super-obvious to y'all, but just for the community, I want them to know, ultimately, that decision rests with us.
The mayor's exactly right, and is the other reason that I can't sit down with that developer, because they don't know whether this becomes easy for them or worse. Because here's the risk for the developer if this doesn't work. He runs the risk of needing to do additional developments in Aqua's CCN. So, if he screws him on this transaction, you think it's going to be real easy to do that next deal with Aqua? So, they've been walking a real fine line. Boy, they're politically correct with Aqua and politically correct with us, but this, to the mayor's point, is a decision that I need from a policy direction, because if you had no interest in doing this, then we haven't solved the problem. But if you are interested in doing this and recognizing that there is some benefit as a policymaker, this is the last piece we need to truly solve an issue and not put a band-aid on it. So, that would be the short-term policy question. The long-term policy question is this, because we have a wastewater CCN that's three times the size of our water CCN, at some point in time in our growth, we're going to become that developer. We're going to have to have a relationship with Aqua to provide us water that they can't manage the fire flow for the same reasons they can't manage it now in the ETJ. So, our development cost in Bastrop become off the chart, it becomes uncompetitive, and it could cause some developments to skip over Bastrop. So, one of the things that will require some long-term study before we do anything, and long-term is greater than my bandwidth to do in the next 12 months, but essentially, what we need to do is study the cost of acquiring their system in an area that we would annex. Because in that point in time, we are the quote-unquote developer in the model we talked about earlier, where we're now going to have to service these residents. So, we need to be able to send a bill that is water and wastewater, and now, because we manage the system and their individual meters, we can better manage the wastewater that we are obligated to serve with the CCN. What we don't want to do is acquire infrastructure that's going to cost more than we can charge to bring it up to our standards. So, there's some balance here. If that is effective, then what we've talked about, Dave and I, at a operations level, is that we would voluntarily acquire their CCN, and they would voluntarily decertify because we'd have a partnership agreement that says, when we acquire Aqua's water CCN, we're going to buy wholesale water from them. Does that make sense? So, there's a short-term reason for doing it, and that is so that we can provide one-stop shopping with economic development. But the second reason is long-term, it helps us resolve the fire flow issue being in their CCN, and it allows us to have great data to then manage our wastewater rates with our customers.
So, then, do we just use the meters, the metering, the meter measurements of those either existing or new clients to determine the volume that we're buying wholesale from Aqua, or how does that get determined?
One of the things we spent several hours looking at is how can we isolate their system to components to answer that very question? So, we would have to figure out a way to valve off a logical part of their section and acquire that, so that that section could be master-metered. And then, we would know the amount of water that would be serving that area, and then, we'd have to replace their meters with our water meters for the radio reads, and then, we'd have the data to know how to allocate the master-meter costs to the individual users, as well as knowing what to charge for our wastewater.
And so, we're not, we're not going to have City of Bastrop here, City of Bastrop here, Aqua in the middle, or, actually, the other way around, where we're in the middle of an Aqua water circuit, if you will, it's going to have to be somehow cordoned off that it's measurable and isolated.
I don't, so can you translate?
Well, what I'm getting at is that if you've got this big network of water piping, and you say, "Okay, well, we're going to serve water to this person, this person, this person," and then, you're on this big network that's basically Aqua water, but we're maintaining this piece and that piece, and you've got Aqua in the middle, and then, on the other side of our piece, there's Aqua over there, and it's passing through our part of our CC, our new CCN.
If you leapfrog, generally, we would be annexing in a contiguous manner, and what he's talking about is if you go into these deals, and let's just take West Bastrop, if West Bastrop is surrounded by all Aqua system, he's just wanting to make sure that you're able to keep track of it. And I think for West Bastrop, you have a master meter, but I think you're saying, "That's fine for one, but it can start looking like a spider web."
We already have...
And I think an alternative to that would be if Aqua Water would just agree that, "Hey, the metering that you're doing individually is okay." I mean, we're metering all these individuals, that's the amount of water that's being used out of their system.
You've already got that situation. We surround Aqua, and they've got a little donut in Bastrop right now. So, we're already dealing with that. The challenge is, once we have this, once we get policy coverage to publicly have this conversation, then we can resolve that by better determining the answer to that question. In some instances, it would make sense to acquire Aqua's CCN. In some instances, we'll just say, "We're not going to do that." An example of that might be is west of, or, yeah, no, it's east of, that direction's east, yes, I always get that confused, she has to constantly translate for me. East of 95, it's Houston Toad. And so, Houston Toad, by virtue of the way the permit that the county has, it's going to be very low-density. So, it may not be economically advantageous for us to take over that part of Aqua's system because the cost to do that requires us to subsidize the system in order to provide, buy the water at their wholesale rate.
And the other part of that, and you, we all know this, if you're over there, we may very well have the wastewater CCN, they're likely to be on septic tanks and not...
That's right.
...and not be in the system anyway. So, then, there's no point, and there's no conflict, and you just let...
That's right.
...knock it out.
But where you do want to make the improvements is in your wastewater's CCN. So, the ultimate goal is to have them overlap, if you can, or, I guess, run...
And I don't know that it's necessary to solve that problem, I'm just, the old mind's cranking here, thinking, "Well, this could get really complicated," and I think it could be simple, I think, as you're looking at it, if there's an, if we need to capture because they want sewer a node that's in the middle of something else, if you can just say to Aqua Water, "Hey, it's real simple, we've got 30 meters in there, we're going to pay you for the amount of water that those 30 meters use."
And it's a third-party agreement, and you can do something like that, and maybe that's how you run it as well, but...
What I hear Mayor Protem Schiff saying is, from a policy standpoint, "Don't bring us a contract that's more complicated than it needs to be," that you're looking for efficiency and so that there's not confusion going forward.
Yeah, I think you want to cover, well, I think you want the agreement to be written in a way, "We don't want to have to redesign the infrastructure to meet our contract. We need to make the infrastructure work, the existing infrastructure, as much as possible to work with the contract. We don't want to be laying new water lines because we've got this little isolated thing out there where the infrastructure's already there, let's make sure we have..."
We can handle ourselves.
Yeah, "Let's make sure we have enough flexibility to just do things that make sense."
Okay, I don't disagree. So, let me back up now that I understand the question and address it. First of all, in order for Aqua to decertify their CCN and for us to recertify the CCN, it is a permitting requirement of TCEQ. So, by virtue of a... So, by virtue of establishing a partnership agreement, you don't have the authority in that partnership agreement to assume their CCN. All you're doing is giving me political cover to go have that conversation. So, every place, and let me tell you how I see this working, is we've determined we, in the next three years, want to annex this piece of property. So, part of what we do in our business development plan, of being able to represent to the citizens the services they can expect if we annex, one of the things we'd analyze would be the condition of Aqua's system to determine whether or not it makes cost, it's cost-effective to do that. If we say, "Yes, it does," as a part of that annex, then we would have to formally apply through TCEQ for a decertification and a recertification. So, that's right. And so, the process will require us to stop and do that, and it won't be willy-nilly. So, all you're going, all I'm proposing to you today is that we acknowledge that we need a partnership with Aqua. Long-term, it makes sense for us to get out of the competition business, and for us to get in the partnership business. And the interesting thing that Dave thinks, and because I'm learning the central Texas water wastewater way of doing things, he really thinks this is a state model. That we will be able to prove to the rest of the state a way to take our current conditions, have a partnership that's based on win-win, and a set of values, so that everybody that's in a small town can grow efficiently and work together instead of making decisions that are consistently causing a conflict. And there are stories in Aqua's past with cities where it's been controversial. We've got our own set of stories. But as we grow, you can't do managed growth just in time if you're constantly having debate that conflict. So, if we all get on the same sheet of music with a set of parameters that make this smart, then it makes us be able to do what we both do way more efficiently and way more or less in conflict. So, if that analysis determined that it was cost-effective, and the city would acquire the Aqua's system, you at that point in time would have to approve our application to TCEQ to acquire their certification. So, the policy conversation in all of this happens each time it does. You're not going to give the city manager carte blanche to just go acquire, you know, Aqua's CCN, just because we think it's a good thing to do today. No, nothing with the TCEQ is easy. It's problematic, and it's a process, and you have a role to play in that.
I'll interject just one thing.
Hang on just a second, Trig. But the important thing is, we can't start to have that relationship, then decide we don't want it, then think that we can go back to it. So, although there's not a blanket, every piece of property, this is the deal that we're signing, we really do need to put a formal policy. It is Bassdrop's policy to have a partnership, and I'll let the lawyers decide whether that needs to be a resolution or whatever. But, we need something that everybody can count on going forward. Is that correct?
That is absolutely right. What I do not want to be put in the position of is that y'all agree today, and then the dynamics of the council change, and just on a vote of three to two, we ain't doing that. Yeah, y'all can change your mind, but we need to have a process and an agreement we're going to have to publicly talk about for you to do that. And I would certainly hope that conditions with Aqua would have to substantially change to the negative for us to not be willing to maintain this relationship. Because we will be cutting our nose off despite our face to do otherwise. That's right.
Sorry, I was just going to say, it's TCEQ actually handles the regulatory environmental quality, and the Public Utility Commission is the one that handles CCN.
That's appropriate, but regardless of the regulatory agency, they're not going to move unless you've said, "We want to move." So, with that perspective, let's talk about the partnership with Aqua in the terms of win-win. What I'm asking for today is a consensus that y'all think this is a good idea. So that I can then move forward with developing an agreement with Dave, the attorneys obviously will craft, that y'all will approve sooner rather than later. Because we need to have that document in order to solve the one-stop-shop with economic developers, or with prospects of economic development. The piece that will also need to be approved fairly quickly with Aqua is also a wholesale water agreement. Let's talk about why that is necessary. Aqua has an agreement that builds in rate of flow, peak demand. And let me explain that for the viewers at home. Typically, what happens when you buy water, or you have an agreement to treat wastewater with a regional purveyor, they have to build plant sufficient enough to take whatever demand you need when you need it. And so, typically, what happens is, is let's use the relationship that the City of Dallas has with its suburbs. If you ever use 12 million gallons of water in a day, as a baseline, then you will consistently pay for 12 million gallons every day for a period of time until your rate of flow changes. And the reason for that is, they have to be able to produce that 12 million gallons the second you need it. So, you buy into their plant to protect that capacity that you need. That's great if you're growing, but when you are a built-out city, it becomes a huge source of contention because now you're paying for water that you're never going to use, particularly when the state is preaching conservation. So, it just keeps that source of tension, and that relationship moving forward that people never, ever get beyond. So, Aqua's done something that I think's pretty unique, and that is, is you pay for our rate of flow the month that you use it. And the month that you use it is, it's $45,000, and then it's, what, nine cents? It's $45,000 for like the first million?
2.95.
What?
2.4.
Okay, so, it's $45,000 a month, and then nine cents for every thousand gallons that you use, correct? So, the $45,000 entry point is way more than we can produce it for. But, if you need that extra capacity, that $45,000 is super cheap, isn't it?
Super cheap.
That's right. Because we won't need that extra capacity except for July, August, and September. So, we're paying essentially about $130,000 a year, instead of $10 million, to have a plant for the three months a year that we need it. So, when we get the centralized water plant built, and we have two wells, we can meet any peak demand that we currently have today. So, what Aqua is doing is giving us time. They're the bridge that gets us from, we may need 2.9 million gallons peak flow this summer, but Trey's already told you, 2.6 is a stretch. So, that .3 that we need for those three months, now with that emergency connect, we just unscrew the valve, we take that as we need it, and guess what? Aqua sends us the bill for the water we use that month. If the valves stay shut, and we don't use the water, they don't send us the bill. But what that does is gives us an agreement with Aqua, so if we have an emergency, we've already established the price, if we need them to manage our seasonal peak demand between our current system and solving the problem, boy, they're a super-cheap alternative. So, with that in mind, I need some consensus today, that yes, a partnership on a wholesale water basis to take over their CCN and be a good partner is appropriate. Because that helps us with the developer conversations we've got to manage. And the second piece is to go ahead and approve a wholesale water agreement with Aqua, so that we have time to do, which y'all have indicated to me you have an interest in doing, and that's a centralized plant. So, those would be the policy decisions, short-term, that we need to make, like in the next 60 to 90 days at the latest. And then, we'll worry about the long-term partnership in the months to come, when it makes sense to do it. But those are my two immediate needs. So, with that, Mayor, I'd appreciate some feedback relative to this conversation.
Councilmember Jones?
I really appreciate you working this out with Aqua. I mean, there's just one thing, obviously, what I see today is one thing after another that you've taken, it was just a complete- ...and solved it. And I want you to know how much I appreciate you, and I wholeheartedly support what you want to do.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
I agree.
Councilmember Nelson?
Win-win.
Councilmember Ennis?
I agree, and I want to make this statement. I appreciate your vision in pursuing this. And I see us not approving this as a real impediment to our future growth.
Thank you for saying that. Because that really, you know, what makes a relationship is win-wins for everybody. You don't have good relationship when it's a win-lose. And so, I appreciate you recognizing that they're helpful to us. That's a real important element to a successful relationship going forward. And they not only are going to help us, but they're going to save us millions of dollars just by sitting down at the table and recognizing their strengths is not a negative reflection on our strengths. It really helps us actually be stronger.
I just want council to realize that part of why we're talking about Aqua today is you've seen now that I don't want to go out on the street and tell our citizens, "You're picking up the tab all by yourself for the wastewater situation that we're in." And so, you can see that the water treatment, and the wastewater treatment, and the ability to, everything just gets interlocked together, and you really have to have all of those things working together for it to be a good deal. I was always disappointed that there wasn't a better relationship between Bassdrop and Aqua. And honestly, any of the municipalities or governmental entities, when our taxpayers write a tax bill, they pay the county, they pay the school district, they pay the city. There's folks, where my husband and I live, there's ESDs. Some people pay to a WCID. And I think there is an expectation from the citizens that those entities are cooperating with each other, and doing something that's best for the folks that are writing that check. And I think this is a huge step in that right direction. And I think when we publicly can approve something, it also allows Aqua to make good strategic decisions going forward. And if they know we're planning on taking over an area, and that we are prepared to do the infrastructure, then they're not making lousy investments that eventually have to be picked up by all the folks that are Aqua customers. So, I just kind of wanted to circle us back to, it's not just our constituents, it's all of the folks that we have partnerships with, it's all of their constituents. Because sometimes it's the same, and sometimes it's not. But I think we should have a respect for the environment and for all of our fellow citizens. So, I think, city manager, you've got a resounding yes. But we also realize that today's not a decision day. So, one of the things that I would like, and I'm not wanting to put you on the spot, but in the near future, we should communicate when we expect that council would be voting on something, you know, is it an April thing, is it a May thing? And you don't have to answer today, but we ought to, with the public, because we'll be asked a lot of questions, and we ought to have an idea of the timeline.
So, let me tell you that what I'd like, and what we'll end up with, will be two different things. I would like it in the next 90 days, but realistically, let's say that between now and when we approve the budget, it'll be fixed. And the reason for that is this. Writing this partnership agreement is the easy part. Figuring out the legislation and the regulatory requirements to make it happen are two different things. So, it will require Allen's Water Wastewater Attorney, and he has a top-shelf attorney on his team, sitting down with Ty, and taking what should be a fairly straight and simple contract, and making it hugely complicated, to address all of the regulatory hoops that we have to go through to make it work. So, we need it in the next 90 days because I would like to be able to put West Bassdrop under contract, so we know exactly how much they're getting used. Because that makes a big difference in the rates that we need to educate our consumers on going forward. So, I have a huge sense of urgency about that. But, I have learned that we just don't move fast, and it just, it is what it is. So, sometime, Mayor, between now and adoption of the budget, we will have this worked out. And every month, we do it sooner than that's a victory.
I think that's fine. And it's a question, we're fairly publicly, each one of you who vote has said, "Yes, I would be in agreement with this." It would be nice, and I don't know if they already have, if the Aqua Board would also publicly say that they intend, they have good intentions, we're hoping to all work on it together, so that, you know, and they may already have.
They have. One of the things that as we move forward, that Dave and I have talked about, is when we get ready to approve it, then we actually have a joint board meeting. And that y'all approve it, they approve it at the same meeting, to send a really strong message to the development community and to county, that we mean this, and this is the way we're going to do business. And so, to your point, Mayor, they have already given Dave the preliminary approval to move forward with that. One of the things that we did quietly, because of the inefficiencies of Bob Bryant and Willow, I would make Curtis a happy man if I would tell him to turn those plants off today. Nothing would make him happier. So, we went and sat down with Aqua, and said, "Could you bridge the gap for us to do that between now and when we could get this plant built?" And Dave had a conversation with his board. They were prepared to provide that water to us, but the truth of the matter is, their water rates, long-term, are stouter than what we're paying. And so, we did not take him up on that offer, but they are already working to have that conversation. Their conversations are a lot easier because they already have identified water sources, plants, and rates. And as y'all know today, we don't have any of that. So, I didn't have a context to bring this agreement to you until we could obviously state the win-win, and why this partnership's so important. So, thank y'all for that, and just know we'll be addressing that in the days to come. Yes, so, the final session is, what are the next steps? And I need for y'all to finalize some design decisions. We've talked about it, we've got some head nods, but I think the public is owed a moment here. And here's what I mean by that. The basis of our conversation all day, and we have spent the year attempting to be able to do, is to ensure that Gold 2.2, which is to ensure long-term water system capacity and water quality for existing customers, while accommodating incremental growth and development is met. That's what you said to me when you hired me, is that the comprehensive plan is not optional. It is going to be the way we do things, and if we can't do that, then we're going to amend it, and acknowledge we can, and then replace it with what we can do. So, this has been the driving factor for this year-long discussion. So, this morning, you saw all of the reasons for building a centralized water plant at Excess Ranch. And the inefficiencies of our system currently are such that we believe we can make this happen for a nominal or consistent rate that we're paying today. So, we need to acknowledge that, yes, y'all are comfortable with a centralized water treatment plant. We have indicated today that ozone is the preferred option. Because, long-term, over 30 years, it is a very effective maintenance treatment, it deals with all of the aesthetic issues that we're likely to see, and it's also providing us the perspective that should- And it's also providing us the perspective that should the treatment requirements of TCEQ change as we age in 30 years, this is a good treatment to anticipate that. We're going to consolidate all of our Simsboro water rights into one permit. Short-term, what that means is, is that we would, when we are able to take Bob Bryant offline, we will take the water rights assigned to that plant under a permit and consolidate those water rights to Excess Ranch essentially attached to the centralized water treatment plant. We also know that in order to be able to do that, we have to drill a second well at Excess Ranch, which has not been built into any of the numbers that you've seen. But given the fact that we just completed Well J, we know that's about $1.2 million. We just got through talking about executing a wholesale water purchase agreement with Aqua. That helps us manage our peak demand, that's a challenge. And that would require us then to have a wholesale water rate classification in order to take that wholesale agreement from a partnership perspective for economic development and manage that. So when we enter into an agreement with a developer to provide wholesale water, regardless of where we get it from, we have to charge a rate for it. So y'all will have to approve a wholesale water rate category in your rate structure, and you'll also have to approve a wholesale water model contract, just like our wastewater wholesale agreement we need to do, so that both of those are worked out. So at this point in time, I want to ask y'all to have a conversation about this. Have I captured what it is you've agreed to? And then I'd like you to publicly acknowledge, if it's true, that we have satisfied Goal 2.2 of the comprehensive plan.
I do believe... Mayor Pro Tim Schiff? Your honor.
I do believe that staff and our City Manager have been effective in preparing a plan that meets Goal 2.2. And I personally would move to...
You're publicly acknowledging...
I publicly acknowledge, I'm not making a motion, but I am acknowledging that I believe this is the way to go.
Councilmember Jones?
I'd like to publicly acknowledge that I'm in agreement with what you propose. And you guys are, the assumption is ozone, because that was the one thing, they really didn't know what we were going to pick. So y'all are both in the ozone round. Okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
I certainly concur and publicly acknowledge that this is the direction we need to go.
Councilmember Ennis?
I too concur and publicly acknowledge this is the way we need to go.
Okay, so I don't get to vote, so of course I have the questions. On the drilling the second well, will that be in the budget? Like, because I understand the idea of putting the $1.2 million in the rate, but somebody's got to write the check to do the, to drill the well. So you, if we tell you that's what we want you to do, that'll come in the budget? Or have you got money somewhere in the current budget to get started?
By the adoption of the rates, we'll have a plan. And when we get through this series of acknowledgements, I have a plan of action by year that will talk about when we would want to drill. And so by that time, we will have established a funding source. And so I have this somewhere, but we'll cover it, and I think I've covered it. Built into our rates right now, thanks to rates for capital and impact fees, we have paid for the 16-inch water line under the Colorado. We have also planned and have money set aside for the water tower at State Highway 20. So every year, we've got a couple of those capital plants factored in. So Mayor, the answer to your question is, is I don't think we would start drilling that well until about 2020, because the central plant would come on in 2021. So by that time, we will have identified the funding source and either be able to pay cash or have it built in our rates as a payment. But all of what we said to you this morning, we believe that we can either pay with excess fund balance or the water, the rates of the water are close enough that we can make that happen without a substantial rate increase, even if we have to sell debt and the water rates annually pay for that.
Okay, and that makes perfect sense. So what you're saying to the public is that we're not going to spend money until we need to spend money on that second well. But the other decisions, like getting the Simsboro water rights into one permit and the one centralized, that's all steps in the right direction, and that's why you've got it listed the way you do.
Yes, and let me say it a different way. When you, when you say you want a centralized water treatment plant, in order for that to happen, these next steps have to happen. So I will, once I, once you tell me, "Yes, I'm going to do a central water treatment plant," and you understand that in order to do that, all these other things have to happen, we've gotten the blessing. And so we'll do this for each one of our decision matrix, and then I'll lay out the timeline between now and 2021, when all of this would have to happen.
So what everyone's agreed to, the biggest things are the centralized plant, the type of treatment, and the idea of the agreement with Aqua. Because some of them have consequences, but basically centralized, what kind of treatment, and yes, we want a partnership with Aqua. And you're on, I'm sure you now have a page with wastewater.
Yes.
This is all the water discussion.
Yes. And understand, and this is where Trey will want me to do a disclaimer. When we hire an engineer that specializes in water treatment, the ozone is going to be our preferred, certainly going to be the one we're going to tell them to work toward. But until the project's designed, and the mayor knows this, you don't know what you have. So if it isn't ozone, then a public conversation will happen with this body that says, "I know you want this, but you really ought to have this, and this is why, are y'all comfortable with this?" So what you've essentially given me are some milestones to put in a project scope that says, "This is our goal." But if they come back and say, "Yeah, you can have it, but it adds $22 million to the project," y'all going to tell me to get over ozone. We know that. So I just want to, I just want to say, you've given me a box to play in. But we, we don't know what we don't know, and if it changes, y'all will absolutely be involved in it, because that's a policy statement you, you have acknowledged you want.
And Curtis, this makes your life much, much easier moving forward, as soon as we can get all of these types of things done. You're excellent. Okay, I think you've gotten your consensus.
So just one more time, I've put the numbers on this, just because to Councilmember Ennis' point, the decision is a no-brainer, but the cost is, oh my gosh. So one of the things that, as I've sat here and processed this morning, let me provide a little context of how we move forward with this. One of the state law requirements that cities have to meet is, we have to be able to prove that we've hired the highest qualified engineer to do something. Because by virtue of being a professional service, the state says it's illegal to bid your service. So whoever you hire, you have to be able to prove that you, you got the level of expertise required. So traditionally, cities do a request for qualifications, and engineering firms then submit their proposal, and you create a list of preferred vendors with whatever disciplines of expertise that you're looking for. And so the city's never done that, so we're now to a point that we are big enough and growing enough that we need to do that. So we prepared an RFQ. We went out in the market, and much to the surprise of us, I mean, just jaw-dropping surprise, we got 49 submittals. That is off the chart. Oh my God. If you got 15 or 16, it'd be a glorious day. So 49 just speaks to how interested the engineering market is in the growth of Bassdrop. So we have 49 proposals that we're in the process of approving, and we're going to have to then put together a scope with whatever engineer is selected on that list to move forward. So there will be an opportunity in the near future for you to have to publicly award a contract to an engineer to develop this wastewater treatment. And at that point, we will be prepared, Councilmember Schiff, to present a presentation on how we compare in water rates. Because we will talk about the public cost of what we anticipate this costing and how much it will cost to design the plant. And that will give us a context then to come back and revisit this and begin the conversation with our public about, "Yeah, this is a lot, but here's why it's a lot, and here's how we compare." So we will make that our first milestone on how we have another public conversation about the rates and how we move forward. Wastewater plant, I'm sorry. It's just all running together. That's right. So my question to you is this. The comprehensive plan wastewater goals were twofold. One is to expand the wastewater collection and treatment in a cost-effective manner. So this is the alternate B allows us to build the train, which is the way the engineer talked about it. We will add components to that train as we grow and as we need the demand, but the system will be very efficient, because we planned ultimate life of that plant over a 30-year lifecycle. So we believe that that meets Goal 2. 2.4, yeah, I had to swallow, I was going to choke. So that was the first piece of that. The second piece of that is the cost-effective manner, and that was looking at the cost of capital and the operations and maintenance of that capital over the lifecycle of the investment. And so we've done that. And alternate B is also the cheapest alternative. So we believe that we have addressed expanding the system in a cost-effective manner, but we also believe we have addressed providing that service in a cost-effective manner. So that's the 2.4. 2.5 is to enhance the water wastewater system efficiency. One of the most significant inefficiencies that we can identify that's on this chart is the peak quotient factor. Currently, we handle about 2.65 because of the way we're designed, but we know from rain events, we need to handle 4.0. A well-maintained system has identified every manhole, has maintenance of those manholes on a very routine basis to keep inflow and infiltration from occurring in those manholes. It also means that we smoke-test our system in the various zones, and we find the leaks and the cracks in the system. We go in and seal, replace joints of pipe, we manage the lost caps that allow water to infiltrate our system in a place it wasn't designed to do. All of those things require a robust maintenance plan. So what Curtis put together in that 10-year plan that we talked about early this morning is now built into our rates is system maintenance, the way maintenance needs to be done. So hopefully, we can enhance the wastewater system efficiency and with time, not have to have a system at a 4.0, because we can prove with our maintenance that we can do something at a 3 or a 3.5 and still have capacity. Well, in future years, that changes how big those clarifiers are and all of that. So when you have to pull the trigger, that's right. So again, we have attempted to answer that today. Certainly, alternative B's way more efficient than we're doing today, but even long-term, we've built that in. So having said all of that, do you believe the decisions that we've offered you make sense? So I need affirmation that alternate B is really what you want, and that we've met those goals for the comprehensive plan for the public's purpose.
Councilmember Jones?
I agree that alternate B is the best way forward.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
I also agree.
Councilmember Nelson?
Well, I certainly concur. One of the things we've alluded to in all these conversations is the cost of not doing anything. And I think that we need to keep that in mind by not doing something in our storytelling to the public is going to be extraordinarily costly. So alternative B is my choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
I agree with Councilmember Nelson's comments. I do want us to constantly keep our eye on mitigating factors or factors that could mitigate the fee escalation, because that's going to be the bottom line for our customers. So, and I know we've talked about that, and we will be, but I just want to mention that again.
The thing that, for me, that is so critical about this wastewater discussion is, on the water, you can flip the switch with Aqua. You can pay through the nose and you can not like it, but you can still have water coming out. God bless you. If we, if we have a problem with one of those tanks, we're, it's the kind of, yeah, that's, I didn't think I should say that word in public, and I'm glad you whispered that, but it's the idea, you're, you're in the situation that that engineer was talking about. You're trucking somewhere, you're, it, I don't even want to think about what those alternatives are. So although I know they are very intricately entwined with each other, for me, from an, from an engineering standpoint, the wastewater is super much the most important thing. It is, it is really, really scary. Talk about leaving it better than you found it. It's not by dumping out raw sewage in the Colorado River, which is, which is the, that'll be the first thing that goes ethically wrong. That's where we'll be. So yes, alternative B.
So with that in mind, what you've agreed to is to build a centralized, activated, sludge wastewater treatment plant on 26 acres. That will allow us then to have one wastewater treatment permit, not two, and we will do that under Rule 217, not 3, whatever it was, that allows us to have a more stringent, what's the word I'm looking for, Trey?
Regulations, yeah.
For what we put back in the river.
It's a higher level of quality.
Yes. Thank you. Outflow was the word I was looking for. So this also assumes then that we will approve a wholesale wastewater model contract that Allen's team is already working on for us to bring back to you rather quickly. And then we're going to have to establish a wholesale wastewater rate classification in order to make the wholesale wastewater model contract work. So these are the steps in the near future that will have to happen. So knowing that we have limited bandwidth, wastewater treatment will be our number-one priority. We will move very expeditiously to get this under design, and we'll do that first before we get to the water.
And I know I've said that, and I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, but that wholesale wastewater contract and those rates that we established, along with the rates with the water, which, you know, Aqua's a, is a factor in setting some of those decisions, it behooves us to be in that sweet spot. We, if we come up with rates that are so high, no developer is going to do it.
That's right.
And that completely puts the burden of all of that rate back onto our citizens. We also can't make it so low that they're not paying their quote-unquote "fair" share. So there has, there is reasonable, and I really want us to strive for that spot. I don't think we should be trying to look to them to be a cash cow, but we shouldn't increase the burden of our citizens because we're adding some folks to it. But as we discussed, the reality is, and we know today, because it's 1:30, things that we didn't know at 8:30 this morning, without some additional folks to help toe the trail of going to these centralized plants, it really does increase the burden of our existing citizens. So it's not if we grow, it truly is when we grow. We need the additional folks.
So let me, let me talk just a minute about that sweet spot that the mayor's referencing. We need a developer to be able to pay upfront the impact fees to buy into the system. We need the developer to finance their own improvements, so that we're not subsidizing that development. So that's what we need from the developer. What the developer needs from us is to make sure that we're less than Aqua's fire flow solution and cheaper than them building the plant. and cheaper than them building the plant themselves. So those are the boundaries by which we're going to work toward to find a win-win with our development community, just like we've done with Aqua. So, we're the best value in town, but we haven't done it at the expense of our customers who need the developers to be good partners as well. So that's the sweet spot in the game, just to put a little closure to that. So while finalizing a partnership with Aqua doesn't come with a comprehensive plan-specific goal, we've established it's critical for us to be able to make that goal. So, Dave and I will start working on that partnership agreement so that we can represent to the development community moving forward that we're in lockstep. And then we'll also be executing a wholesale water agreement really quick, because we're getting into the hot months, and I want Curtis and Trey to feel good about being able to use that on the days that we need it, and not put our equipment at risk and push it like we've had to because we didn't have an option. So, that will give Curtis some flexibility to make more strategic decisions in how he operates that facility. So, let's get to the main event, which is when are, when are these things going to happen? Because essentially, I thought about this early this morning when I was walking through this one last time. The awesomeness of all of this, I hope you appreciate from an operational standpoint, because not only do we owe you data from which to make an informed decision, we get to live with that decision. So, the awesomeness of the decisions are not lost on any of us at this table. So, as I was going through this one last time, just making sure that I was going to be willing to live with it, it has dawned on me, we have an entire work plan just in the decisions you've made this morning. And it's just a small piece of, you know, what the expectations are. But in 2018, we're going to complete the purchase of the 3,000-feet acre, acre-feet of water at Excess Ranch. Trey talked about this morning that we have already executed a purchase agreement with the developer, but now we have to finalize a sales contract, and George is working with their attorneys to make that happen. We know that we need to build the water tower at State Highway 20. We had proposed an alternative plant design that is not normal in Texas, but it's normal everywhere else but Texas. And it really was very cost-effective to meet the requirement in the comp plan about how you manage the efficiency of your system. And it was a glass tower, could be built-in components, and it was the optimum of maintenance. TCEQ has zero interest. So we've waited all this time to go through a variance process that they're really not happy about, but they don't want to say no because the developer of the plant's already said he's going to sue the state of Texas because he's got a proven record. So we're kind of in this churn. So we've made the decision that we're going to get out of that churn, and we're going to go back and build a traditional, check-the-box, Texas-style water tower. So what that means is, is that we now have to develop projects, go out for bid, because the water tower installers engineer it and do it. So, we're, we had to get through today to order to have the bandwidth to do that, so we're going to do that. The water line across the river, the 16-inch water line that's going to better allow management of our system between Zones 1 and 2 and 3 is under construction. We talked to you just a minute ago about approving that qualified engineer's list so we can then hire the right engineers to do the right task. So, this year, we're going to execute an agreement with a contractor to begin... I mean, not a contractor, an engineer, to design a water treatment plant. We're going to hire the specialist for designing the wastewater treatment plant. We're also going to complete the design of the water distribution lines that are required to get the water from the centralized facility at Excess Ranch to Willow. We're going to convert Willow from being a centralized treatment facility to a storage facility that the water then enters our system at that point. We're going to complete our emergency connections with Aqua and WCID, which is the actual installation. Y'all did approve the agreement last summer. There's been a lot of study of our system on where those connection points are, and that became pretty critical when we thought about using them for redundancy of water at peak demand. So where that connection point will be will make sense to get the water into Bob Bryant. So, that's part of why we haven't already checked that box. And then we'll execute a wholesale water agreement with Aqua that we've talked about. And then we will adopt a wholesale wastewater contract and establish a rate before the end of this fiscal year in September. So these are the two things we have to do, just as I said, a work plan all by itself. So, fiscal year 2019. By the end of next fiscal year, we need to have completed the design of the water treatment plant and treatment source. We need to have completed the design of the wastewater treatment plant because at that point in time, y'all are going to have to take some formal action on rates. And the reason for that is, we're now going to have to start funding the construction of that plant. And we're going to do it in bite-sized pieces. And there is an advantage for selling bonds annually when you need it instead of getting the money and paying interest on it when you know it's going to take four years. So, we will have enough information at that point in time with the project scope from an engineer to sit down with our...
May I interrupt for a second while on the subject? Would it make sense, since we know it's coming, to increase the rates now to get ahead of the game?
Spoken by the person who is rolling off of council. I would think that, you know, we can do anything, right?
But y'all are in charge, yes ma'am.
So is that something you want to look at? Have Tracy do a model of... Because it can be a hockey stick raise, or it can be a gradual climb. Is that where you're thinking?
I hadn't really thought it out. It just makes sense to me that if you know that you've been basically giving away wastewater services for 20 years, or 30 years, or however long it's been going on, that we start catching up. I mean, had we been charging the right rates up to this point, we would have some money in our kitty probably that would help us fund this, but we didn't. Rather than waiting till the very end to do the increase, seems to me, and maybe ramping it up would make sense so you don't hammer people all of a sudden that it goes over between now and...
So council, what percentage do you think you could stomach that you want Tracy to run, run some numbers on? Because I don't want to have...
Can I address you?
Please.
Because I feel like you're talking really more about the structure than the actual rates. I feel like you're referring to the fact that we need to visit our structure.
No, he wants to start moving the rates while we visit the structure.
So that he's building a kitty? He's trying to get you some money in advance?
Well, we have looked at her... So, the rate model that we've been given does span over years. And we have looked at, you know, obviously, when wastewater bonds get issued, there is a jump. There is a possibility to take that and average it out and start that early so that we can put that money away to pay that debt in the future. Yes, we have looked at that.
And so that's the direction you're giving us, is to start implementing that?
To kind of minimize the...
Yeah, the pot doesn't change. We know what the costs are going to be. The question is, do we want to start paying for it ahead of time?
Right.
And make the impact lesser over a longer period of time?
And that would most definitely be our suggestion. I mean, once we get some final rate numbers, that would most definitely be something that we would look at.
Here would be my comment, even without final numbers. We know we're at 20, and we know we've got somewhere to go between 60. So this year, if we move to $27, it's a step in the right direction. So, even without good data, we know the span we've got to do, and we can bring you back something. So, I would appreciate some follow-up to the question the mayor's asking, and that is, what is your threshold for paying this year?
So, let's start with Tracy. Exactly what is our rate? Is it 26? Is it 26-something? What is our rate?
We're just talking about base. The base, I think the sewer's 26, and the water's 27. And that's your base.
So it's not like 26.50? Yeah, I understand. But because we want, want to know, what's the number we're talking about? Because that's the number we're going to talk about. How, what percentage would you want to consider going up? And if we were to say, yes, we want you to look at a rate increase immediately, when would that go into effect?
In October, when we change rates traditionally.
October of 2018.
Yes, you would adopt it as a part of your budget. Typically, you do it in the fall because the water's dropping off, or you could make it effective January 1st, when we're in the winter and averaging, so...
And I didn't know, it's been so long since we've done rate increase. Do you usually do it in October when you approve it, or do you usually wait till January 1st of the following year?
You typically approve it in September, so that gives us three months to begin talking about it. So when the rates go in in January, they're aware of it, but it goes in when they're using the least amount of water, so they're used to paying for it by the time the excessive use comes along.
Okay, but, so the rate effectively would go up with the budget on October 1st?
You would approve it, and if you determined you wanted it to go into effect October 1, yes, it would be immediate. If you decided you wanted to go into effect January 1, you would approve it in September with a January 1 effective date.
Okay. When you said approve it, I was like, well, then it's already in. But you're saying approve it and you hear about it before you see it on a bill?
That's exactly right.
So, and honestly, between October and January, we can work out that. But the base number you're saying is $26 is the base number that we're talking about?
And some change.
So, do you guys, I need from you guys, if, hopefully, we're not going all the way to 60, although that is the potential. Do you want to go up a dollar? Do you want to go up 10%? Do you want to go to an even 30? What, what numbers are in your mind?
I'd like to see that comparison chart, if you could send it.
I can.
I'd like to look at that.
We'll graph that and see, yeah.
I want to see some comparison numbers before I go out, jump out randomly, say, well, I'd be comfortable with 7, or I'd be comfortable with 35, or whatever.
Councilmember Jones?
I'm, personally, I'd be liking it 30 or 35%. I would like to see that for this year, just because, I mean, I just think that's a pretty gradual... Because you're looking at having the full rate go in by...
2021, three years.
2021. So, to me, that just seems to be the best.
30%, that's like almost $10, is that what you...
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Going from 27 to 37 in one year?
I do, I agree. This is, that's reality. And I know that's a lot, but you know what? That's, I'm not worried about elections. I'm worried about making the right decisions, and I just think that would be a good direction.
But also, you know, you're gonna, if you delay this, you're gonna have to, you gotta pay the paper at some point. You're going to get to that point that's going to go from, from where we are now to that, that big number, all in one tranche. It would be, to me, a whole lot easier to do it a third, a third, a third, and let people get used to it and work it in their budgets.
The more money we have upfront, the more we're able to reduce the cost on the back end. So, if you are collecting that money, then we, instead of borrowing it, we make a down payment.
But we want to look at the structure at the same time, though.
Yes, absolutely. And when she's saying looking at the structure, she's talking about the, if we aren't, we're giving somebody winner average, and they're not winner average, and cleaning up that type of stuff on our rate structure.
Absolutely. Obviously, that needs to happen as well. But I think we need to start approaching that ultimate number for two reasons. One is to reduce the amount of money that we're going to have to finance. And secondly, get people trained that it's going to cost more for this service. They've been getting a discount all these years.
And Mayor Schiff, let me say this about that. 83% of our customers are residential. So the, the change in the rate class is only going to represent, impact 17%. So to your point, the primary freight payers are going to be paying regardless. So, that a third makes sense.
Well, I was just going to say, what we asked Tracy to look at is different than what we're going to approve in October. I'm just trying to keep her from having to run 27 scenarios. So, we've heard from Councilmember Jones and Mayor Protem Schiff, Councilmember Nelson or Ennis? Let's, let me start with Phil, since I've always been going that way. Councilmember En, you said you want more data before you would even pick another one?
I just want to look over that chart. So I'm comfortable with saying, you know, if we jump $10, a third, I'd say $10. I can look at, so that when I, I might be talking to people, I can say, well, we're still low compared to 50% of the... You know, it's a talking point for me in a comfortable zone.
Let, let me make this easier on y'all politically. I'm looking, let me, let me reframe the question. I'm looking for your threshold for paying so we know what kind of scenarios to bring to you. So I'm not going to bring you a rate class that is a third, a third, a third unless y'all are all in consensus. What, what I'm hearing is, your outer boundary's about a third. So is there a better way for us to structure the rates that make better sense? So, you're looking for something that has a good story, that we're growing in comparison to our neighboring cities so we don't get too out of whack too quick. So, we could bring multiple scenarios if we have some context of what you'd like the first year to kind of look like. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking you to make a final decision and then say, well, wait a minute, Councilmember Ennis, you said $10. We're just looking for some parameters to plan. We need to tell the rate consultant something.
So, Councilmember Ennis, was that your, you want to look at the other numbers and... Do you want them to... Do you guys need a scenario to run, or can you run a couple?
Yeah, we just need some perspective of what you'd like to see.
Councilmember, oh, go ahead.
I don't even need anything run. If you need an answer now, I guess I go with what Deborah and Gary said. I, I just wanted to look at the other ones to see...
Where are we?
Where are we in the whole scheme of things?
So, we, you know, that, the TML chart, Lynda, you were saying you forgot that that information was available, but we quickly looked through that. I would think we would be interested in, other cities our side, what's the highest, what's the lowest, what's the average? Where does our current rate fit within that? And that's obviously fairly easy stuff that you could come up with.
Let, let me say this about that. We have, we had two goals today. One was to present you the policy choices so you make your decisions. And then the other responsibility I felt we had was to give you a worst-case scenario so that when you agreed to something, you didn't really understand what you were agreeing to. We would have gotten to the TML chart when we started running this scenario. So, why don't you let us do this? Why don't you let us review those numbers and figure out the parameters? And then we will schedule a work session in the next 30 to 45 days so we can have a public conversation and talk about scenarios. And that will still give Nalissa plenty of time to build the rate structure around what you're interested in. So what I needed to hear was, y'all want to start the rate increases this year for wastewater in anticipation of what you know is coming through. So, that's sufficient for direction for me today. We'll go back and analyze that, put it into context, and be able to explain the information so that people at home can understand the information in the context with which you're going to make a policy decision. Because the worst thing for y'all is to have to explain something over and over because we didn't do a good enough job upfront. So, not to put y'all in a bad spot. I'm hearing y'all want to make a rate increase.
Well, hang on, Councilmember Nelson didn't get a chance to talk at all.
And let me say, I support that plan.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I'm in complete agree. We need to start the rate increase now. What that rate increase is going to look like, we still need to probably look at that a little bit more. But I like the idea of a third, a third, a third, very much.
So my, my thoughts on that is, I want to be careful about a third, a third, a third because we don't know if the max is 60. So, and I, and I appreciate that. The other thing I want us to be aware of is, we're talking about drainage fee being added, a wastewater fee. And I think that we are, it's not responsible. We've got to be looking at the whole picture. We have folks that are on fixed incomes, and, you know, it's easy to talk about $2 for this and $3 for something else. But you start putting all of that together, and it can be a substantial change. So, it doesn't make it any easier. To your point of, the sooner we start collecting a little bit more, the better off we are because then we're not paying an interest rate on it. And we've got, we've got... And we've got, we've got funds available, and we know there's all kinds of things coming that would mean that we would have to have them. I'm not comfortable with saying $10 in three months from now. I want some more information, and I think that's what Councilmember Ennis was going at. To your point, that wasn't really, that's, we weren't anticipating Mayor Protem Schiff saying, hey, let's start paying now.
No, no, we weren't.
Which, that's fine, and that may very well be the right answer, but I just, I want to put on a little bit of the brakes that we make sure you went out of your way to delay this workshop until the point that we could have a complete discussion. So we weren't saying, here's the water bill, and then a month later, here's the wastewater bill. And I want to look at this from a citizen's perspective. How many, how many rates are going to go up and be added that I'm in my house that I've been in for 20 years? What does that impact look like?
So let me kind of better define the journey that you've been on. In February, we talked about drainage. And we know that in that half plan, there was $22.5 million worth of requirements of three projects, and we know there's more of that. So that was what we talked about February. March is water wastewater, so that you have a context of what's out there, what's going to happen. And I would say to you, in order of priorities, you've met the priority today, and it's wastewater. Not flushing the toilets, not an option. In April, what you're going to get is the street piece to this. So we're going to bring the Street Pavement Condition Index and a maintenance program that Trey and Curtis are now working on, because that's also a piece of the pie. So when we start our conversations on the budget in June, to the mayor's point, you've now got all the big-ticket items sitting out there, so that you can manage what you do when and not do that at the expense of something else that, had you known it was out there, you would have made a different decision. Because all of these needs are real. We unfortunately have reached a place where we've got a couple of systems that we don't have choices on. So there has been a method to the madness of the journey I've taken you on, so that when we get to a place and you need to start really giving me policy direction so I know what kind of budget to bring to you, you are owed, full disclosure, for all the reasons the mayor just said. Whatever decision you make, there is a pocketbook you're going to go to for all of them. And you have to be able to understand the context of that pocketbook. So that's why I wasn't prepared for y'all today to say, what's that final rate? And to the mayor's point, we don't know if 60 is going to be it or something less than that, which is why I had positioned you to wait till next year when we had better numbers. But I applaud the logic of what that looks like. So we will come back and have another problem conversation against the TML numbers and facilitate that journey, and we can just put Nalissa on alert and say, we think we're going to do this, and we've got time for us to have a secondary conversation, when that's the point of the conversation to move forward. Okay?
You okay, Gary?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. And Councilmember, you were going to say something. Are you okay, Councilmember Jones?
Well, I was just going to say that, boy, all this stuff that you're addressing has been an issue with the public for literally decades, some of this stuff. So I think that for you to put that out there and for us to talk about that, just kind of, I just think it's appropriate. Even though we might not know for a few more months, and maybe all the parts aren't in here, I think the public's got to be well-prepared for the fact that, you know, this is coming, and we're going to try and be responsible on the front. So I feel, I think it's really appropriate that we brought it up, and we'll wait till we get all the rest of the information.
It falls under the category of be careful what you wish for because you just might get it.
Councilmember Ennis, do you have any other things you want to say on this topic before we move on?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Nelson, yes, ma'am? Okay. I'm almost afraid to ask, are we close to the end of your slides? Are we, what else?
I got till 2:30. I'm going to have to schedule them.
Yes, ma'am, you are. I just didn't know what are we had left?
Yeah. So we had a conversation relative to the water tower. So the next thing that we've got to work on next year is acquiring the right subway to install the water distribution line to get from Excess Ranch to Willow. In fiscal year 2019, we will start the permitting process to be able to drill a second well at Excess Ranch. So this is the paper aspect of being able to draw, drill that well, and we'll do that next year. We may have this already resolved, but addressing the rate policy issues for me was going to be a next-year question, just because we don't have the bandwidth, honestly, between now and then to do that. Once we have good information, which we will when we complete the design of the water and the wastewater treatment plant, then we'll go back and evaluate what we're currently charging on our impact fees, and Tracy will update the model with new anticipated construction costs, so the people coming into the system that will use it are paying the appropriate cost associated with that investment. So 2020. 2020, we would actually start, and 2020 is October of 2019. We would start construction of a water treatment plant. We would also start construction of that wastewater treatment plant. And the reason for that is, is that as much as we're managing the TCEQ permit requirements on when you build a plant, we're managing, we don't know how much of a life we've got in the one we have. We will then start construction of the water distribution lines. So we will have designed the water distribution lines, we'll evolve the right-of-way, and we'll start installing or constructing the water distribution lines to connect the centralized water plant to Willow. We will also start construction of the wastewater distribution lines to get the wastewater from Zone 1 and 2 at our plant here to Plant 3 that will be built on our 26 acres at the edge of town. We will also operationally develop a process to transition the new water treatment plant online and take the old one off. So operationally, we've got to have systems in place to make that happen, because you don't just turn one of them off and turn one of them on and pray it works tomorrow. So we're going to have to think about that, because, we're going to have to think about that, because our citizens, at the end of the day, should know there is a plant switch. But that's an operational process that needs to be thoughtful and deliberate, just like the same thing with the wastewater treatment plant. So we'll start that in anticipation of having to do that in 2021. So in 2021, we're going to complete the water treatment plant. We're going to complete the wastewater treatment plant. Now let me stop and put an asterisk to this. We know that if our current plant was functioning fine and was not sitting out there, that we believe we have SUEs until fiscal year 2022. But with growth, it's possible we will need that at the end of 2021. So we've been moving with a sense of purpose, anticipating we've got time. If we get out at the end of next year and start having problems with the wastewater treatment plant, it's possible we'll pause the water treatment plant. So we have the bandwidth and the money to hit the go-on button and push that Ferrari into seventh year, because we're going to have to get that wastewater treatment plant online. So if we don't have the rates and the capacity to do both, we will stop the water because the toilets have to flush. So this is what I was talking to you this morning, is we have a plan, but we also, if we get in a bind, have the ability to better manage what we're doing, because they're all choices, and get wastewater where the toilets flush. Because at that point in time, we've got an epic problem. So if life happens the way we like for it, this is kind of the way it will go. We will complete the construction of the water distribution line so that the connection happens and we can turn off the Willow plant. And when I say turn it off, it will quit being a water treatment plant, and it will become a water storage plant. Just like we'll turn off wastewater treatment, Number 1 and 2, and we'll turn off by a branch. And so at the conclusion of that, we have, will have done a phenomenal amount of work in the next three and a half years to get us where we need to be.
So the only, and I know this is obvious, but I think the only thing that would change is if you were in expedite mode on the wastewater treatment plant, you would also expedite the wastewater distribution line, so that plant's not going to do you any good.
Oh, absolutely. It would be, we would...
You'd pull off the one system and go on to the other.
That's exactly right.
The other thing to note is that part of why you want to use Willow as a storage is because it'll help you have consistent pressure in town, and it becomes a backup as well, right? And we need to take advantage, and that's a way that we're efficiently utilizing something that's already in place. Councilmember Jones?
So for me, I'm just, seems like we would, right now, just want to accelerate the wastewater treatment plant, but that's just, you know, after all that we've heard, it just, to me, I'm a little surprised that we're just, I would think that that's something that we'd want to, like, from the get-go, get, do faster. But that's just my comment. I don't expect, you know...
That, let me answer this in a way that doesn't appear flippant. We can get it done today if you want to go to $60. But the reason for doing this is to manage the shock and awe of the pocketbook that the mayor's talking about. That's right. Yes.
So just like we're talking about the sweet spot with the developer, there's got to be a sweet spot with our citizens. You can't go from, because some of our citizens would say, dude, I'd have been paying on it for the last 20 years if only someone had asked me for it. But you can't take me from where I am to $60 overnight, and we can't fund it without their income.
Okay, so excuse me, I misunderstood then. So you're not talking about managing the construction costs of the builder, you're talking about managing the utility rates of...
They're one in the same, because how the builder gets paid is with the revenue generated by the wastewater rates. So let me, let me answer your question this way. Remember the conversation we just got through having with Aqua about the partnership? And that conversation got super easy when you saw what the cost of doing this on our own looked like, and to build a $10 million plant for $90,000 or $120,000 worth of value became super easy because there was a win-win for us? Absent, the toilets aren't going to flush, your citizens aren't going to be interested in immediately paying $60 a month. But while they won't like it, they'll pay it because they're not going to flush without it. And so if we got to a situation where we had to expedite that, we'd have to expedite the wastewater rates. But we have a story at that point in time to help them understand why it went exponentially up. I had a citizen when I was in Rowlett, we had to raise the water rates, and they were pretty dramatic, because they were high to begin with, and we were adding $11 a month to the water bill. And her comment to me was this. She said, you know, I don't want to pay $11 a month and nobody else does on water if I don't have to. But when you tell me I'm not going to have water, and it would have only cost me $11 a month, I'm going to fire you because, seriously, it's just $11 a month. But you have to realize you're not going to have water at that point in time for that $11 to have a context. So we wouldn't do that unless we were in a sense of urgency. So we've built this with the mayor's scenario, that we're going to be kind and gentle, and we're going to take the journey to get where we need to be over a period of time, so we don't put anybody unnecessarily in a bind. But if that's the only choice we got, and the rest of us need our toilets flushed, we'll just have to bear the brunt. So that's the answer.
Councilmember Ennis, I think you were going to ask.
I was going to ask the same question, so you just answered.
All right, so we really did get to the end of your slides?
Yes, ma'am.
Lynda, Curtis, Trey, Tracy, we can't thank you guys enough. This, it's very obvious that this was not something that you whipped out last night in 30 minutes, and I've just caught Colin out of the corner of my eye. Thank you for giving up your Saturday with your family as well, and to the City Secretary and James, I really appreciate everybody's time and efforts. It's really important stuff. I would encourage Council, she was going to make one correction on a number and add, add some of the information on the TML rate before you'll have it in your Dropbox to be able to look at it, but it's clearly public information. I would encourage all of you to share your favorite three slides with your favorite four people so that we're having a factual conversation in the community and not a I heard and someone told me, because there's been so many numbers and so many things talked about today, it would be quite easy to take something out of context. So I would encourage all of us to become as expert as we can on the topic, because I estimate it'll take about .2 seconds for us to start being asked questions by our citizens.
Mayor and Council, I will update this slide, and I will put all of this in your Dropbox, but today represents the second of three meetings between Thursday and Tuesday. And I have until 6 o'clock to finalize your agenda for Tuesday's meeting, so I'm not going to be in a position to add any information to this. So we will update that one slide, we'll get all of this up, so that as you start thinking about it and having questions, you've got that resource material. On Monday, we will sort and work through the numbers, and we will provide some kind of slides that become talking points. So when you do get those questions, you have what the mayor carries around with her, everything is everywhere, is acetate with numbers in it. When she gets asked a question, she has a talking point to then walk through the citizen, and we will get those to you early next week. So when you do get the questions, you have what you need to facilitate that conversation.
I appreciate that, but we all know your highest priority is 6 o'clock tonight, because that's kind of a big one. So I know there's only a few of us, but let's give staff a round of applause for all of this, ma'am. Thank you guys very much. It is 2:10, how about that for, or actually, 2:13, says Steve Jobbs. We're getting out early. We've covered a whole lot of ground, even some more ground than we were expecting to cover with the rate discussion. So thank you guys all very much. Be safe, and we'll see you at council, if not before. And we are adjourned.